I can.
I can too.
Great. Evelyn, you're still muted, but I see you on there.
Got one minute.
Yes, seven members.
Yes, and I've started the recording.
Okay. I'd like to welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Public Hearing, and this meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I'd like to introduce on my right Jacob Turnbull, Director of Planning, and to my far left Mel Wilson, Deputy Director of Planning and the planners assigned to tonight's meeting. As a reminder, the request for PC 27-23 Real Estate Partners X LLC has been postponed and will not be on the agenda for the evening. I hope you picked up a copy of the public hearing guidelines that will outline the procedures we'll use, and since we only have one petition tonight, we'll cut this short. First, we'll hear from the planners on the petition, and then we will then hear from the petitioner, and then anyone in the crowd who is far or against, and remind you that commissioners can ask questions of anyone who speaks and comes to the podium. So we will not make a decision on tonight's petition until October 2nd. If we need more information, that decision could be delayed. So with that, let's go ahead and do PC 26-23. Was it Kawa Shaker?
Good evening, Commissioners. PC 26-23 Kawa Shaker is a request for a change in zoning from C2 Shopping District to C8 Plan Commercial District for 0.33 acres located on the northwest side of Morgan Ford, approximately 130 feet northeast of Sinwell Drive. As you can see from the county context map, this site is located in South County, and the aerial shows the site outlined in red. This is the land use map. As you can see, along Morgan Ford, there is several commercial uses. As you can also see, there are single-family homes behind that frontage, and the current site is currently doing auto sales and repair work, which is not permitted currently in its C2 use. This is a larger aerial, as you can see the name, "Single Family Homes" right behind the site and adjacent to it. So before you tonight, this is again a request for a change in zoning from the C2 Shopping District to a C8 Plan Commercial District. The proposed use is for sale, rental, and leasing of new and used automobiles, including trucks and motorcycles, as well as associated repairs and necessary outdoor storage of said vehicles. In the C2 Shopping District, stores and service facilities, as will provide a range of goods and services usually used, consumed, or needed by the home or by individuals in a home. This is kind of more of your small business catering to the general public in the C2 Shopping District. Currently, in the C2 Shopping District, vehicle sales are not permitted by right or with a conditional use permit. Vehicle repair facilities are only permitted in the C2 Shopping District with the conditional use permit. In the only area in which the proposed use is technically allowed in the zoning ordinance is in the C4 Highway Service Commercial District, which allows for the sale of rental and leasing of new and used vehicles, as well as the necessary repairs for those vehicles. In the C4, there is a minimum lot size of one acre for automobile sales. Tonight, the petitioner is coming before you asking for a C8 Plan Commercial District, which is the establishment of a combination of developments and uses for which no provision is made in any other single-C commercial district, or the establishment of developments and uses and locations is appropriate under the site plans and conditions. So now looking at the site, this is looking west at the public hearing sign. This is looking northwest onto the site. This is looking east, sorry, at the church across the street. This is also looking northwest, or nope, yeah, this is looking north at the signage. This is looking south. This is looking west into the site. This is looking west on the northern portion of the site. This is looking south through the site. This is continuing to look south, just a more closer aerial of that under the canopy. This is looking west, and this is on the southern part of the property. This is again on that southern part of the property, looking west. This is looking southwest. This is looking west at that southern property line. This is looking west, this is directly behind the site at the single-family homes along Para Lane. And next, we'll have the petitioner.
Would you advance it one more to the site plan? Thank you.
Hello, good evening, Your Honor, and everyone who's been present today. And was watching us through this, we do appreciate it for you guys to be presenting here and to give me permission to go ahead and present myself and my family. First of all, my name is Kawa Shaker, I'm the older brother of the Shaker family. It's the business run through me and two other brothers, the youngest one, Gauran Shakers, sitting on my left side, and the middle one, Gilani Shaker. We get this property rented from Mr. Bob, owns the 85-21 Morgan Ford Investment Company. We do run the business as a car shops, and then we find out if we can get it permitted to able to do used car sale. It's a small family project, it would be maximum about a 15 or less than 12, 15 car, you know, at the time to buy them, fix them, because we are a small new business starting up, and we like to, like our free time, we're like, we're not busy, to go ahead and use our time to fix, buy some car, fix, work on them, and try to resell them. It's not a big dealership, we try to do just only small business, used car sale with the family, me and my two other brother. Plus, we've been pretty good with dealing with old neighborhood, they're pretty happy with us. I have the list of signed up old surrounding neighbor right next to me to the right side and left side, with including this two dealership to my left side and the gas station and the right, right side house, I have that copy with me. And we always try to keep cleaning our grass, we cut them off once a week, every, at least twice a week, we go ahead and outside cleaning any trash, any collected from the street. And if you guys have any question regarding, it's my first time being a court, so I'm a little bit confused, you know.
Your hours, your business?
We open six days a week, every day from 9:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. Sometimes we stay late if we do have some extra business to do, extra work, our cars people wants to get them next day in the morning so they can go to their job. But typically, we do every day from 9:00 to 6:00 p.m., except Sunday where we're off.
How many cars are sitting there overnight right now?
Right now, to be honest with you, I have 10 cars, were mentioned on my, or friend of, some of my friends, they tried to keep them there, and I don't charge any storage fee for my customer. I try to win customers, so what I do, I tell them until I get their part, a lot of the part requests to be in order, so I let them, hey, you know, it's a free charge storage, I don't want you to go ahead and take your car and back and forth. So for now, I always try to win customer, because I do have a space to keep cars out there, you know. So approximately, if it's my customer only, it would be probably around like seven, eight cars, otherwise, I can like, those rest of the car can move out, you know, some of their friends, they want to keep it for now, but.
What's your plan when you start restoring these cars?
I don't know if you have seen some of the pictures out there, Your Honor, or sir. I do park 10 cars, behind 10 cars, that we have more space, to be honest. I mean, like I said, if you want to do used car sale, it would be probably like seven or eight car at a time, it's not going to be that big number like a dealer, you know. It's just a small business we try to do. I'm in full-time student aviation flight school, so I'm trying to do a good side business with my family, with my two brother, you know.
What's your lighting on the, where are your lights at right now?
Light?
Lighting on, for the lot?
I still didn't get it.
The lighting for your lot, do you have any lamp poles?
No, sir. I have one behind the property, it's, there's electric lighting, and I just turn it off. I mean, you know, it's membership with the Ameren Electric, but it does, I mean, if I get lot, I will definitely get that one. Otherwise, there's, the sovul lights are attached to the building itself, facing to the lot from the west, to the north side and to the east side. Yes, sir.
How long have you been selling cars there already?
We have not sold any car, we tried to, I did post, I got a letter from the county today, I had four car, to be honest with you, I'd said, posted for sale by the owner, and today, the landlord have text me and tell me to come, I have a pickup letter from the county, it says, you're, there's two, they're like, it's not a violation, it says like, a two thing you have to fix. I had the three signs, the toll feed, like says, we are now open, or we do car fixing mechanic, they said those signs has to be 10 feet away from the street, basically, which I can't put in them, so I've moved them off, and then they say you can't put a sign, and you can't do car sale on lot, so I erased and delete all those signs that says used car sale at the lot, that's why I canceled it.
How long were those cars on your lot?
There were about, I would say, two months. It's like basically personally sell car, it says even, it sells by owner, it's like personal, not a commercial, sir.
I just want to remind the Commissioners to speak up into the microphone for the stream as well.
Sorry about that.
No, you're fine, thank you.
I was just wondering how we got here, so you had.
Oh no, I had the ideas, and I did talk to Ms. Mel Wilson regarding, I asked them, when I was applying for my car shop, like as a mechanic shop, and asked them, hey, where's the requirement to be able to get a car sale permit, like a dealer permit, or whatever you guys call it, sir? And then she said, there's like a long process you have to go through, which is requesting zoning change from C2 to C8, because you're not qualified for C4, like Ms. Mel, I believe she explained it, and then I was like, you know, if there's a chance, if I can, you know, like give my shot and go ahead and, you know, apply for it, there's nothing to lose, you know, I will just try to get my permit or permission, or if it's allowed to, you know. And I was like, let me go ahead and apply for it.
How many parking spaces do you have now?
In the plan, there's a multiple plan, you can see in the second, third page, it's like the newest one, in the top, the bottom side, like the oldest one, because they tell me there's some clearance, you have to keep cars away from the street. Basically, in my parking, I don't know if you can see picture of the way I park my cars, you should be able to see them in here, that can fit easily about 30, 35, 36 cars in a lot. Like this way, I can like, on way to the back of the property, 10 by 10s car, and from of the property, I can fit 12 cars, like here on the right side. But as the plan, it'd be 26, as the way the minimums request and the laws or the requirement by the county of San Luis, there are 26 parking spot. Yeah, there should be 20.
As a minimum, or?
No, at the maximum, how much I can have by the law, San Luis County requirement for parking, it switches in the, in the third page, sir.
What's required?
The requirement for automobile sales is based on the showroom space, and then for inventory, so the requirement is. It's actually three, three are required, and then I think the rest are shown as vehicle storage, yeah. Three spaces, three bays, excuse me, I misstated, the requirement is 13 based on the bays and the sale room, because there's a requirement for the repair per the bay, and then he's shown 22 proposed, so 13 required, 22 proposed.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of empty space on the lot itself that's not actual parking space, can a car be stored there overnight?
What he's, what he's referring to is why the cars aren't in the front, is because there's a parking setback, so 15 feet from the property line, there can't be any vehicles parked or stored.
Mr. Shaker, would you clearly for the record state the uses that you propose at this site, just very clearly?
Sir, could you repeat it again, please?
Sure, can you just state very clearly, what are the exact uses for the site that you are planning to use the site?
Like I said, car sale, I want to do used car sale out there in the property, plus my, the current business that I'm doing, it's a car shop, we do fix and repairs and service car. Only those two things, sir.
Therefore, as I'm looking at this here, that there's a middle lot there that is already C8, is that correct?
I believe it's currently C2.
Well, would you go back to the, just go back to the land use plan? Yes. So there are a few tracks in the area utilizing the C8 Plan Commercial District, but just north, there is a C8 that permits auto sales and auto repair, and then similarly, the sort of eastern quadrant of Morgan Ford and Seaworth. But, thank you, Gretchen, but they only permit sales, neither of them permit the repair vehicle of those vehicles.
So that's, that one that's C8 right now, is that?
My neighbor.
Okay, that's your neighbor?
Yes.
Okay.
Your honor.
Okay, thank you.
And I do have his sign and signature down here, I would like to show to you guys if whichever wants to take it out and consider.
You can bring it, we'll put it in the record, and you can also bring your speaker card for me as well for the record. The yellow card.
I have a question, this is Bill. Sir, do you, you plan on any physical changes to the building or property?
Not at all, Your Honor. We don't need change.
Signage or anything like that, are you changing?
No, sir, we're not changing anything in the property, the property is in perfect conditions, 90% concrete, very fresh and clean, no oil, no contamination, we do have all those been approved, the only, the entrance from the north side, it's the pavement, and it's still clean, and we do calculus every Saturday, like every Saturday, and we do clean the lot and from any trash, even from the street too, we clean everything, as you saw in the picture, we always keep it clean, we wanted to present good way to our neighborhood.
What do you leave out overnight?
What do you have overnight? It looked like you had a lot of spare parts laying around on the?
That one is my, uh, what do we say? Every time we do fix car, we do once a week, once a month, be honest. We do once a month, we collect all the scrap, all the part that we been changed, we take them to the scrapyard. So it's like a high hidden storage from the backside to our, to ours, all the way to the south side. We even put some cars so we don't want to show like any parts and, you know, like damaged part to the customer or to the neighbors. And we do get tire recycle, uh, once in every five or six week, the company comes on. They take all the recycled tires and wherever we, we don't have work, or we kind of slow on job, we send me, our, my brother, one of the workers with us, like two people to collect all this crap, metal, old driver, old doors, old scrap part and take them to scrap, uh, scrapyard.
What do you do with while you're waiting? You leave it outside or?
That's the only thing.
The only place you got?
Yeah, but there's no chemical contamination because we do have three, uh, oil tank for the oil tank and direct gutter water, which we do recycle them. The company comes on every, when they get full out, we call them, they come pick them up. But for the metal, we keep them, it's about a three or four weeks. Once we get empty, there's a lot of, uh, metal stuff there. We put them in our truck. We have a work truck and we take them to scrapyard. And we do have overseen and approve, you know, for the recycling, for the scrapyard and everything.
Okay.
Ken?
Miss this, if I did, I apologize, but this is a sale of new automobiles? What new automobiles will you be selling?
No, sir.
Well, it says in the?
I can, you mean in the public hearing notice? On the public hearing notice itself? So we, when, when a petitioner fills in their application, we make sure that then what we put on the public hearing you, notice uses the terms from the zoning ordinance. So that's why it says new and used, but the planning commission and their recommendation can narrow that to, to what he's requested, which is just used sales. But we advertised it that way to match the language used in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. I was gonna say, because I didn't see an affiliation with General Motors or Ford or Posner or anything like that.
Right. So that was, that was the way we, we advertised it.
Okay, anyone else?
Uh, ju- just one last question I have. In looking at the material, it's difficult to, uh, see if there's, is there, uh, some sort of, uh, site-proof fencing behind the facility today?
Yes, sir. There's a fence behind us all the way down and it's been all covered. And we do cut and trim those tree and then plant that goes on. We collect the tree from the both side, from our side and from the backside too.
Well, I see it. I, I missed that before. Yeah, okay.
And you can have, uh, all picture of the property. They have the, my paperwork that brought it, uh, almost the last one. And you can see the property was pretty messed up for the past six year, as you can see in the Google map. But we always keep no grass, no, no leaves, nothing. We always keep it clean from even our side and from the backside too. And we do have five star almost in our star rating in our shop from the day we opened from last year, November. We always make sure our old customer were happy for the service we provide them and.
Are you doing any bodywork?
No, sir. Only part change if they, it's like a door, they want to replace it. We just replace it. There's no paint, there's no bodywork. Like we just take the part doors and put a back new one. That's why you saw a couple doors upside there.
I was wondering. All right, last question, last question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, do you purchase vehicles too, or is it just sales?
Uh, we, I mean, if you want to have sales car, we have to purchase them. And for purchasing them as a commercial, you have to have a permit to be able to purchase them from auction or cool part or any other facility.
Can someone bring a car to your site and you buy it onsite cash?
Uh, you, you can that, you can do that because you're personally allowed only to do six, uh, car sale instead of Missouri as a personally.
Um, I have a question. Can you say again, where are the auto, the, the scrap metal? Where is that stored and also the tires?
Which, could you repeat your question, please?
While you're waiting to get enough scrap metal to take it to, to salvage, where is that stored?
Those stores in Illinois. Let me ask my brother, what's the name of that? Uh, it's stored at the lot man, but the tires too are stored, uh, behind the container.
So they're stored behind the building?
It's not actually, it's in just open lot and we, there's like behind the container, we, we do organize the tire and the tires top of each other. As you can see on the left, oh, could you back picture, please? There's like, you see, we put them in top of each other and then there's the, uh, recycle company comes, uh, once, um, once a month typically, uh, collect those tires, which, which we pay them three hundred and fifty to four dollar for, for each tire, depending on number of the tires. And those blue ones are our Valvoline. We buy our, uh, oil from Valvoline, full centric oil. We put them here and then we sell them in the scrapyard with the scrap metal. Those are clean, closed container. As you can see, there's a white tops in all, all of them.
Do you have any kind of a, when you pump the old oil out, where do you store it?
Uh, if she can come back, there's three container of two hundred and seventy-five gallon, two of, three of them, two of them for oil, one of them for the radiator water and, and the other fluid. And the company comes up and pull them up. They have like the vacuum.
Is there something there to contain if there's any spillage?
If you speak, you need to come up.
It's my younger brother, Goran.
Go ahead, state your name for the record.
My name is Goran Shaker. I'm one of the brothers of the business. So if there's any spills or something like this, we have a material that we buy from, uh, auto parts store. It's like more like sands in case if there's any spills or anything goes on like that. We will put it around where's the le- leak is, where, wherever is split and everything is. So that chemical will clean that oil, absorb it, and we have a bucket that we put in it. And we can take it back to auto parts store and they can, they have their own recycling process at the auto parts store with that chemical that we use for any spills or any freeze or oils.
Okay.
Is there, is there a trash dumpster, uh, with enclosure on the property at, at, anywhere? We, I know we talked about these parts, but?
There's a trash can which we put all trash in, the blue one. It's a two yard trash can. It's American, uh, Eagle Company.
So I get this straight. All this is already permitted because you're in C two, because you're the auto repair shop?
The site is governed right now by a conditional use permit that permits a service station. That is what's permitted onsite and that they do have occupancy for, for that portion of the use, what the, what they, what a service, the repair portion of the service station is, is what, is what is permitted onsite.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the, the only change would be selling cars.
Yes, yes, your honor.
And this is pretty common for garages wanting to do four, five, six cars?
Try to stay busy, you know, like family business, me and other brothers, you know, like the time we don't have that much work to do. We will buy cars, you know, keep, keep them inside a lot and there's nothing to do. Hey, let's start working our cars. Better to, because you still have to pay rents, employees and part and, you know, electric bills. And so we like, let's try to get our permit if it's possible.
Anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, we, we thank you. I don't think we need rebuttal because we have nobody, uh, to say anything.
Thank you so much.
We'll take a show of hands of those in favor and you both get the vote.
Yep.
You're in favor of this. The record showed two.
I mean, the, the reason that we want to do this, take a permits to buy and sell car as well too. Because we have a lot of people that just moved to this country and they don't have the budget to go buy a brand new car from a dealer or something like this, or take a loan from a bank and go buy a brand new car. So we have a lot of foreigner that moves here that speak our language or we are close in the community. So they are always asking for a cheap car use that they can go from home to work and take their kids to a park or to school, whatever. So they, it will be easier for them to find one too, and they can have their service areas like shop and they can service it there and also buy a car from us. And there's a lot of customer that comes there. Uh, their vehicle is in a bad shape. They cannot, it's not fixable or it's very rusty or stuff like this. And they always ask if we have any cars that is for sale with a good price used because right now car prices are very high and they're always looking for something used, not brand new. And we have also two neighbors next to us in the left-hand side. Uh, they also do used car. It's car sale as well too. And one of those, uh, owner for, one of those dealers is owner of our property. So we are very cool with him and also he bring all of his cars to us to get serviced and repaired as well too.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, your honor. Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, and that concludes this hearing.
And then we have a short executive session. So if I could call roll for the executive session. Mr. Hilsinger?
Here.
Mr. Sneed?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
All right, we have seven, uh, first item.
Oh, yes, Abby, please come to present the site plans.
PC oh seven dash oh six, Susan J. Evans and Todd N. Lucas.
Good evening. PC oh seven dash oh six, Susan J. Evans and Todd N. Lucas is a C eight planned commercial district. It's a one point zero eight acre tract on the east corner of Tesson Ferry Road and Gerald Drive. The site is in South County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. Um, the hatched area is the, the portion of the C eight, um, that we're looking at tonight. Um, the site development plan is, is here for your approval this evening. Um, we'll go through it fairly quickly. This is the, um, existing conditions. It's currently vacant. And here's the site plan sheet, um, showing the, the proposed, uh, twenty-nine hundred square foot building, um, which would be accessed from a curb cut, uh, via Tesson Ferry Road. And they have, um, cross access easement agreement in place with the, the neighboring parcel, but the curb is not open yet as the, the remainder is undeveloped. This is the grading plan. These are some construction details of the parking spaces and the ADA signs. This is the, um, trash enclosure detail. These are the architectural elevations. And the sign. And so the department is recommending approval.
We need a motion?
Second it.
Discussion, anyone?
Uh, I, I just have one. Uh, go ahead, Sandy.
I'm sorry. I'm, I was trying to figure out what the building is being used for. I couldn't really figure, get that figured out.
It will be a hair salon. Hair and nails and makeup, I think.
And it's the second, the second parcel from Gerald Drive?
Yes.
And so it would have ingress and egress and cross the first parcel, but that parcel's vacant right now?
No, that would, that would not be built. It's, this parcel is, would be developed in a way that the curb cut could be opened, um, when development is proposed on that parcel. But right now you can only access this site, uh, from Tesson Ferry.
Okay, and I didn't, we didn't really talk about the neighboring properties and all that, but I think to the north, is that the, um, group, it's like a group home?
Yeah, there's the Angels Arms, uh, facility to the north and then residences to the east.
Okay.
Yeah. Are you finished, Sandy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, wha- what is the, uh, setback to the east from the property line?
It's depicted on the plan. I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact requirement off the top of my head.
Well, has it, looks like it has a ten-foot building setback and it, it meets that.
Uh, the, the reason I raised that question, um, as we developed that area, we maintained a fifty-foot setback. You remember that, um, in the past, weren't, Wayne?
No, I do not.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that whole stretch there, we maintained a fifty-foot setback. And at least I think we need to check that.
So there's a seventy-foot setback from Tesson Ferry Road, a fifteen-foot setback from Gerald Drive, ten-foot setback from southeast limits and a ten-foot setback from the northeast limits. So it meets the setbacks in the C eight ordinance.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's the setbacks that are showing. Is that correct?
Those are the setbacks from the C eight ordinance. That I, I just read them from the ordinance and they match what's depicted on the plan.
Gee, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Ayes have it seven, zero. And that's our only site plan. Oh, we got the car wash? We don't have enough car wash?
Um, PC thirty dash twenty-two Club Car Wash Operating LLC is a conditional use permit in the C two shopping district. It's a one point nine acre tract on the northwest corner of Jeffersonian Lane and Telegraph Road. The site is also in South County and there it is highlighted in red on the aerial. Um, tonight, it's just the architectural elevations before you for approval. Um, it's clad in, in fenestration and then CMU block. Um, the elevations match what was shown at public hearing and meet the requirements of the conditional use permit. And we're recommending approval.
Okay, we need a motion?
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Um, I have a, I have a question. I guess I wasn't involved when there, the public hearing was there, um, when we had it. So is that the, um, they're gonna take down the banquet facility?
Yes.
And the outlying building, right?
Yes.
That used to be a mini Pearl before I checked into. I'm just telling you.
That came from twice in one night.
Just trying to give you historical perspective.
It's hard to hear.
I can't wait to read your book, Wayne.
Yes.
Mr. Hilsinger was reminiscing on the past use of one of the buildings, I think. Mini Pearl's fried chicken was there.
That never opened.
You're far from your mic, Mr. Hilsinger.
And where that last petition was, Mini Pearl was on that site too.
Oh, my gosh. Wow.
They were good at building buildings, just not opening.
Oh, not, not operating businesses.
Anyone else have anything there? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Close. Ayes have it seven, zero.
We will, we will see you for a October second executive meeting, video conference. And then you'll be hearing from Evelyn this week about the October, um, ninth public hearing, which will include the rescheduled PC twenty-seven, twenty-three and, and one other petition. That's all.
Thank you.
We need to adjourn.
IGA store.
Our brother?
It was originally built for IGA. I spent my youth working there.
We still need to adjourn.
To adjourn, so move. Second?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it seven, zero. And we'll see you online October second.
Exactly. All right.
Thank you.